Our heavenly Father, we thank you for our many blessings. We ask that you bless the poor and the vulnerable, bless all those in the armed forces and in law enforcement. Give us the knowledge, the skills, the ability and the ability to make all decisions in the best interest of our community. We ask you in thy name, amen.
Amen. President-elect, President-elect, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for its citizens, one nation under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
So, shall everybody, President-elect?
Mayor, would you excuse, Councilmember, please?
Second? For the discussion I hear you all, say aye.
Aye.
For the bill, the justice, the power.
Mayor, would you, before you, say aye?
For the discussion I hear you all, say aye.
Aye.
For the citizens, comments, here we go. Pretty quick. This is a comment for this evening. Oh, we have supposed. Okay, Robert Knudson, other. There's Robert, former Edoff there.
Please, please.
And as Robert Knudson heads to the microphone, we're doing something a little bit different. This meeting here, we're going to be helping speakers with time, so our city attorney will remind our speakers when three minutes is up. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Robert Knudson, I live out on Hoxton Loop, Houston here. I have a couple issues as far as, one of them is where the two-lane ends out there and it goes down to one lane as you're going east. There's a wide spot alongside the shoulder of the road that, there's a rock wall that Whitewater Properties has put up, and there's a white spot right there. That has to be addressed due to the fact I almost got hit three times as far as the head-on accidents, because the people coming from the, coming from the east going west into town don't realize that that is not a traveling lane, and they're on, they're in the eastbound lane going west into town. And it's, it's a real bad spot, and I've seen more than one, one, more than one thing going on right there. And it has to be addressed because there's too much, too much white spot right there and people, people are not paying attention. And then there's another situation, there's a property line fence just on the east side of the complex where I live at, out there, at Town Hill, the Park Complex, and there's cars that do, like, they're, what they're called, they're drift cars, they're sports cars, they're on the other side, they're, I think it's private property, and they're out there, not in the middle of the night, out there during the day, and they do brodies, and you can hear them with these motors, there's three or four of them that do it, and you can hear them, and it's causing the, it's causing a problem out there because they burn off their rubber and everything like that, and that has to be addressed too. And I have called the, I have called the police department on that, and they will not do anything to the fact it's on private property, and you cannot get a license plate number or make a car because it's out there on private property. And I'm afraid to go out there and I might get shot.
That's it, Robert?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you, thank you very much. Right on schedule. How about, Andrew, can you address that lane situation come down?
So, we recognized, oh, that's great, right, seat, wow. We recognize the same issue out there on Appleway. There is, I would say, it is not as clear as it should be with the lines on the road and how the traffic perceives what's going on. So, we have invited for 2018 right now, restriping that section of room so that we have a center turn lane, and then one lane each direction, so that there's clear directions for the cars and what they're supposed to be doing with their.
We're going to address that situation. Holly Woodruff.
I wasn't expecting to speak this soon. Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you very much. My name is Holly Woodruff. I live on North Fairway Road. We just moved here at the end of July, so I'm fairly new. I just wanted to make a brief comment on the budget and the proposed 1% property tax increase. I've got no problem with the budget, I think City Council has done a good job. I had no problem really with the 1% increase. I did want to point out that I just got the new assessment, hey, we've been open this house very long, it's already gone up 6% in assessed value. So, I'm already getting hit with an increase in property taxes, and my understanding is the state of Washington has exempted itself from the 1% limit, so goodness only knows what we're going to get hit with from the state in the next couple of years. So, I just wanted to ask you to consider those of us, especially who are retired and on a fixed income, I never really understood that until I retired four years ago, so I just wanted to ask you to keep in mind that we love living in a growing community. Those of you who've been on Facebook have heard me and like Indiana citizenship, because it's not a growing community where we came from. So, we expect the increases, but just to keep in mind, property values are going up and property taxes will increase just from that as well. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Other public comments? If you can right here, we're going to go forward. On local bills, where's, where's our, where's our current? There he is, there's Christian Brothers.
As he's coming forward, just so everyone in the audience knows, we've been working on live streaming City Council meetings, but we had technical issues, so it's not being livestreamed tonight in case you were wondering.
Well, thank you very much for allowing me to come tonight. I was afraid you were going to leave the three-minute mark up there. Somebody told me I have 30 minutes, I don't know if that's right or not. My wife will probably attest to the fact that I don't, it's hard for me to only talk for three minutes, so, but it'll be brief. I certainly want to thank the mayor and the council for giving me the opportunity to come here tonight. We have been really thrilled to be part of the community, and my wife is sitting there pretty busy, and she's really part of the reason why I'm here. We had been looking for business for, you know, I myself, probably the better part of 20 years, and I came across through a series of really unique factors, Christian Brothers Automotive, which is a Texas-based franchising company outside of Houston. They started in 1982, and they, they basically had been franchising since about 1994, and I'm the farthest one in the northwest, probably one of the farthest located in Houston, but really excited to be here. We had many other locations we were looking at, and by the time, through a series of connections, we were able to get a couple of the lots where we are, I was elated. We thought we were going to have to move away. This is born and raised in Corley, Post Falls, Hayden, worked in Spokane most of my life. We thought we were going to move away, and even it's gone as far as to sell our house getting ready, and, and then through a series of two and a half long years, we were able to go ahead and get our, our place right down the street here. So, I'm just thrilled to be back home, you might say. The, the company has never had a failure since 1982. Every store that opened stayed open, and so I feel I'm part of a strong group to add to the community. We've got, when I'm totally full, we'll have about 10 employees, including myself as one of those. And with about six technicians, right now, we're about half of that today, I should say we're seven, we have seven people right now. And we handle all makes of all those cars, everything from European to Japanese to domestic cars and trucks. We do everything from oil changes to engine replacements, rebuilds. We specialize in diagnostic equipment. Being part of the franchise, we're able to leverage our buying power to be able to afford all the electronics, to be able to, you know, figure out what's going on when that pesky engine light comes on. And even, even Mercedes, BMWs, Land Rovers, Land Rovers are always surprising because it seems like you can't replace a part, it's less than about $7,000. But anyway, we have a few of those around here today. So, I thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak for a few minutes, and I would challenge anybody to come on down and take a look, if you haven't been in our lobby. Quite a few people come in and they're a little surprised, they walk in and it's like, wow, this is like a hotel lobby, nice and clean, and that's how we intend to keep it that way. And so, I just invite anybody down. I see a few familiar faces of folks I know that have been, been in our place. We do do tires too, but I say that hesitantly right at the moment. We don't only do tires, so we, we've been overrun the last couple of days with that. But thank you again very much for the opportunity to speak, it's a pleasure and an honor.
Thank you. Very much. Good.
I just wanted to comment too how great the Christian Brothers franchise was to work with where we're located in the city, so it looked great. So, Mayor and Council, tonight I'm presenting our third quarter reports for planning building services, and we are continuing to go a little crazy out there. Total permits issued through third quarter 2017 is only slightly behind third quarter 2016. The new commercial permits that were permitted, you've seen them starting construction out there, are the Country Vista Retail Building with the Fujioma TI down there on the corner of Country Vista, and then of course we had two additional Legacy Villas apartment buildings with carports that got finished up and permitted. Housing construction, the majority of our single-family growth actually shifted in this quarter. We had been River District dominated, and now it's shifted slightly to south of I-90 with the projects being predominantly Stone Hill, Rocky Hill, and Legacy Ridge, of course. And then our specialty or senior housing is split still between Tretina, Stone Hill, and Guardian Angels. Stone Hill and Legacy Villas are still the only multifamily projects with Legacy Villas that's shown in light blue on the screen here, out right there, being by far the largest. For evaluations, our total valuations increased 20 million between second and third quarters, and it's now almost 66 million for the year, which is split between commercial and residential. These are numbers that the assessor looks at for assessing the houses and the commercial structure and stuff that were mentioned already. And then as far as permit fees paid, the over $1 million, the total permit fees, that includes all of our building permit revenue, site plan reviews, commercial plan checks, carbon dioxide mitigation, which is approximately just a little over half of that amount, our SBC, SBCC reimbursements, and miscellaneous project reimbursements. On the planning side, zoning and subdivision revenues, which is shown on the right, oops, which is shown on the right here, is still split between building permit reviews, which are shown in the blue, and land division, plant occupations, zoning verifications, all those plans that are showing in the red. Our permitting revenue is great, but I do want to share on a sad note, if you've seen us getting backed up even more than we had been, after almost a year and a half of exemplary service, we did lose our permit tech, Zach Johnson, to Parametrics, he's their new land designer, planner too, and we wish him the best, they're very lucky to have him. Also, his last day was October 13th. Also, November 1st was our temporary inspector's last day. Scott Kane accepted a full-time position with the City of Hayden, and so he's going to be one of their new inspectors, and then being groomed to go up to plans examiner. So, we've been a little shorthanded. During the city administrator report though, we will share some good news, we have our new permit tech onboard, she came on this week. So, our team does miss Zach and Scott greatly though, but we wish them the best of their new opportunities. And then finally, this is a slide you've never seen before, because as a parting gift, Zach actually put this together for me. We were able to put together some previously historical data into a reportable format, and what you're looking at is a chart that represents planning activity trends all the way back to 2002 when we first started out, taking permits and land divisions and everything, which just like permitting, is currently at a record pace. That is, that's my report for third quarter, I kept it pretty brief, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And then what's the vertical dash line at?
The blue line here actually represents me and me alone. So, before the line, there were between two and five planners, from the director, myself, to interns, project planners on staff. After the blue line, it is just me. So, if you wonder who I did a little tire or something, you're seeing it too.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Amanda. Great. Okay, committee reports, so finance committee.
Mr. Mayor, member of the council, the finance committees led tonight, the president were Councilmember Burtner, myself, and one citizen. So, here, we own the October dashboard, and potential projects, carryovers 2018. Talked a little bit about utility tax, if you guys remember from last time, we've been talking about driving markets in particular, and some questions on their portion of utility tax. Talked a little about cash balances, in particular, we've got a, see as a sizable cash surplus, or cash balance, I should call it, and we're just talking about proper balances and what's to do with that cash. We've talked a little about the 2018 budget, we've got a few NBQs in, so RJ wanted to make sure to remind everybody that it's NBQ time, so take those in if you haven't already. Talked a little about revenue, in particular, property taxes and sales taxes. Quick update, sales tax did start to trail down a little bit in October, however, we're still $300,000 positive compared to budget in 2017, so we're feeling great there. In terms of sales tax though, we went over the fact that auto and RV, sales tax revenue represents 33% of our overall sales tax revenue, so we say that's wonderful and healthy, but perhaps we could continue thinking about diversification there, and the retail included with auto and RV is roughly 50% of our overall sales tax. Property tax, we talked a little about the 1% increase, I think RJ's going to talk a little bit more about that later. Talked a little about a couple of agenda bills, in particular, the AWC trust and split of employee benefits, a little bit about VIBA and HRA benefits and changes going on this year, as well as rent and associates as a third-party administrator for, for the, for the added HRA, and you'll notice a bridge fund in the 2018 proposed budget, and we've gone over voucher reviews.
Okay, public safety.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers of public safety, it took place tonight, councilmembers, Logan Ford, Key Cope, and myself, Chief Brian Collins, Spokane Valley Fire, also Chief Brian Hasmus, Liberty Police, also Pamela Logan, library director, was able to give a quick overview of library operations. The Friends Book Sale, mark your calendars, the 17th and 18th this month, an important opportunity to support our library. The library held an important Halloween event, cool, Trunk or Treat was the name of this event down at our town square, which was very well attended, I think by the police estimate, we had 350 people lined out for Trick or Treat. A lot of our service organizations also took place in the building to kind of have a, kind of a nice chance to get together with people in our community. The library developing a winter reading competition with your 15th of December. Over to public safety with police, Chief Brian prepared a collection of examples of potential reporting for police activities, and ability of private statistics about how services are delivered for our community. My thought is just trying to come up with some way to provide numerical basis for our ongoing work, excellent work, I would say, providing police services. Brian shared some details of school safety planning in his efforts to get together with the administrators of our schools, the two schools in our, our city, and ongoing work to coordinate, to ensure public safety. I'm grateful for our chief's work to try and work with school administration to be sure that we are prepared, heaven forbid, for anything that should happen within those schools, so I'm grateful for his efforts to continue to drive that. That Chief Brian Collins and Chief Brian Hasmus have been able to get together on an agreement for the use of Knox Box, it's referred to, which is a central, I'll call it key or access location, allowing public safety access to private business buildings. This work is an important moment to be able to say, get access to for police action, facilities that may be closed or locked. So, I want to recognize another tool in the toolbox for our public safety, our police department, but also a great moment of collaboration for our police department with Spokane Valley Fire, great things that they do. Officer Buggeriff is working through the Too Good for Drugs program with our elementary school. This is another great moment of outreach in which our, our police officers get to have real engagement with the students in our community, and I really appreciate that. I want for children in our community to be able to grow up and say they call our policemen friends. Let's see, notify me is a really cool feature of our website, and I think we may be talking about that a little bit more, know a lot more, as a way for you to get aware of actions of our city, both from the state and administrative stuff, council meetings and that kind of thing, but also public safety issues. So, I just say if you haven't, go check out the website, watch and look for the big banner that says notify me and sign up for it. A discouraging moment is I think he reports only 110 people right now signed up for it, so I'm pleased if you have a second, go out and look at liverlakelaw.gov and find notify me. Chief Brian Hasmus has been elevated to the chair of the emergency communications board for the 2018 calendar year. I want to recognize his efforts in leadership in our region, his work, yeah, is amazing. That our CAT RMS system had an upgrade, most recently, that's the rather, I'd say fully featured and really cool dispatch tool that we use as a region, that the upgrade took place between 2:00 and 5:00 AM without any challenges, technical hiccups and such. Just a moment to observe our systems in operation and in ongoing updates. Over fire, Chief Brian Collins, the Spokane Valley Fire Department is going through a public hearing process for their 2018 budget, which should conclude on the 13th of November. Budget items included are pretty typical in Chief Brian's observation, replacement of apparatus, there are no other significant capital expenses that the Spokane Valley Fire will be putting into in the coming year. Ladder truck number 10, that's right, a tiller truck is in service, was put into service yesterday, this is, the guy steers in the back, anyway. We finally are large enough as a city to be able to have these kinds of apparatus, and that thing is seated over in Green Acres at station number 10. It supports our community, of course, in Madrid Portion and Spokane Valley. The new station is way ahead of schedule. These guys are talking about moving in seven to 10 days, where they originally kind of conceived in the third or fourth weeks of December. So, kudos to big construction and the work to assemble a beautiful new fire station in our community. There'll be a Valley Chamber and Company ribbon cutting on the 4th of December, followed by some other open house activities, so watch for more announcements in those actions. Tomorrow, Chief Brian will also be meeting with the safety committee for Spokane Valley Fire on the sightlines and traffic for Appleway, to ensure traffic control and we'll say accessibility for trucks in the station. So, just another great example of the work ongoing to ensure collaboration between fire and police in our community.
Thanks, Amanda. Another council reports.
I would offer, I did actually today also visit with the spoken, Centralized School District's parent advisory committee, and superintendent Ben Small was able to provide a copy of the Centralized School District's report card, they call it, for the fall 17. Then his staff have done a remarkable job, I think, and I'm looking forward to reviewing some more. Chief in the discussion today though was the alignment of suicide prevention programs and safety in our schools. One thing that they want to recognize clearly, the common thread in school shooting incidents are suicidal teens or students, and to say we are working to address, prevent teen suicide is to work, to say we are working to improve safety in our schools as well. So, we had staff members from Central High School and other come forward and to talk about counseling programs that they advocate with both peer counseling and trusted adult descriptions to be able to support and prevention of teen suicide. The second part of the discussion covered nutrition, which is kind of an interesting topic. Food for, food for the kids in school is an important thing, and a focus for these guys right now is scratch cooking. Sounds really crazy, but the less cans you open or things you pull out of the freezer is a good thing for our students too. And so, there's ongoing research right now to put into the budget for the coming year. Yeah, the introduction, I'll say in small steps, of scratch cooking for the students and I, and our schools, all of them, all of us. So, I'm pretty excited to hear about that, I think that's an important thing to do.
Yes. Do we add a couple things underneath this mayor and city council committee reports, and our city boards and commission reports? So, the library board has an opportunity to say some statements to us, not as this opens, says some comments, but has a board, so whoever's with the library board, is that you?
Yes, Pat and I are here. Wow.
Amanda, give us a quick rundown of what the library wants to do.
I didn't have prepared comments.
I know.
Maybe Pat will add something, but, you know, the library, one thing I think is important to understand is just because the, the community center bond initiative didn't pass, doesn't mean the library isn't moving forward. There's so much commitment and, you know, love and energy and all that going into library programs, as well as just the, you know, the ongoing provision of materials, reading materials and research materials and so forth, but the programs for youth and kids and families and bring together families for crafts and, you know, there's just a lot of innovation there and a tremendous amount of community support and enthusiasm. The trunk retreat that, you know, we brought up for Halloween, that was huge, it's just an example of all the big numbers of people that are turning up. So, we're enthused, we're excited, and I'll invite the whole community to keep coming around and, you know, doing more engagement with the library.
Thank you, Amanda. Can I have a panel add?
Oh, she did a great job. We don't have a prayer statement, but I just wanted to tell everybody, you know, Pamela's mother died, that are honoring, so our meeting was canceled from last week, and we're on for this Thursday at 10 o'clock at the library. Public is invited, and I'm busy recruiting people for the friends here.
Thank you, Pat. And now we might invite the planning commission, I don't think we can do it for the planning commission here tonight, but we do have the Liver Lake Sewer Water District, it's Tom, I saw Tom sneak in. We now have you engaged as a permanent fixture on the, on the agenda.
Oh, yeah, that happens. Mr. Mayor, City Council, city staff, fellow citizens, my name is Tom Aignu. It is my pleasure to serve as district commissioner of Liver Lake Sewer Water District, and I appreciate having an official place on your agenda, thank you for your mind. I wondered why we're so crowded tonight. So, I also don't have any, any formal prepare, but I do have some really pretty exciting news to share, I think it's exciting. The EPA Waters Awards Program recognizes the most innovative and effective drinking water state revolving fund projects. The state revolving fund borrowers, fund projects that deliver a public health benefit as well as meet other related goals. The EPA 10, Region 10 Award Program seeks to recognize exceptional projects nominated by state revolving fund. by state revolving fund staff that achieve one or more elements of the water's award. Those elements include projects that are well-planned, address affordability issues, are transferable to other communities, provide benefits for water or energy efficiency, as well as add resiliency and/or sustainability attributes. So the Liberty Lake Southern Water District, which serves residents near Spokane, Washington, used a $905,000 state revolving fund loan to consolidate Eastside Liberty Lake Improvement Club, approximately 300 homes just east of, between the city and the lake, essentially, and around since the late 40s, early 50s. And the two systems had already had an intertie and an agreement whereby they already have a staff, so our staff on contract to them, maintain their systems, we were very familiar with their system, and to our general manager, Bijay Adams', credit, the loan that Eastside had received from the state revolving fund became a source of a discussion that resulted in, I'll read the description, I think it makes it about a succinct, it can be made, it's a long story, but. "The project included upgrades to the existing intertie, replacement of old and undersized distribution mains, and abandonment of two primary wells for Eastside. The consolidation project was made significantly more affordable by provision of 50% principal forgiveness, which brought the base water rates down from $50.76 to $18.52." So again, Bijay Adams, our general manager deserves all the credit. Next time you see Bijay, tell him congratulations. We were one of three communities in the state to receive the award this year. The other two were Port Townsend and Seattle. So pretty proud of that. Kind of a small thing in the big picture, I realize, but nonetheless, something to be proud of, and little things like that keep us in the top of the district.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, Kate.
Okay, so good afternoon, or good morning, good evening. It's been a long day. It's also election night, so I know the tallies are coming in. Anyway, along that line, I just want to mention public comment, and mentioned this a little bit earlier, but we really want to promote fairness and consistency when we provide an opportunity for the public to speak. And so going forward, we're going to be having, using the timer, and we hope it's helpful for those that are speaking, but also everyone else in attendance, so that there's some fairness and equity. And our city attorney, Sean Vouts, will be monitoring the time. So that'll move on to number two. December 2nd, in Airway Heights, there is some training. The Association of Washington Cities is putting together elected official essential training. If you'd like to go, please let Ann Swenson know, and she will get you registered. Chris Kaminski is going to be going, and so anyone else is more than welcome to go as well. As Amanda spoke earlier regarding our new permit technician, it's my honor to introduce Barbara Barker. Barbara, do you want to stand up? Thank you. She comes to us with a long history of being on the other side of the table. She has a very strong background in construction and project management, and so we really welcome her on board, and we learn a lot when we have someone on the other side of the table that has actually been the recipient of permits. So welcome, Barbara. Winter driving, we know that this past weekend, we had a little snow and a little bit of ice, and so Jen is going to give us an update, and as Jen goes up there, I just want to make a push for community notification and engagement. Jen has kind of taken the bull by the horns and used the de-ice and snow events as a nice kickoff to keeping our community engaged. So with that, Jen, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. As you all know, we had our first taste of the white fluffy stuff last weekend, unbeknownst to us, we weren't quite ready for it, but we got out there and had our first voyage of de-icing with our own city crews. They shuffled three guys over three applications, and everything seemed to go well. They had a few little hiccups with equipment, but they thought through it and got it done. There will be a postcard going out in the mail to all city residents, and it's going to show on one side the snow zone that you live in, and then on the backside, it just gives some basic information of when we plow, how many inches, and so forth. So that is going out in the mail this week, so be on the lookout for it, put it on your fridge, call me if you have questions. And we're really encouraging people to sign up for the Notify Me that Dan was talking about. There are currently 124 people signed up as of today. So we put it out on Facebook. If there are Facebook people out there, which I think that there are, please share that out into your community pages to get people to sign up for this Notify Me. We are going to try really hard as we go through plow zones when we have snow events to update people and residents as to what zones are done and what zones we're going to be doing, so that they are aware. Middle of the night might be a little bit difficult, but at least in the mornings, when you wake up, you would have the capability to receive that text message saying what zone has been plowed and what zone they're going to. So kind of a new form of communication. We're testing it out, so be patient with us as we get through that. And then there is also the volunteer setup that we did last year. We tested the waters with that at the end of the season with the snow shoveling. As you all know, when the snowplows go through the neighborhoods, you have a tendency to plow your driveway. They don't try to, but it's just the way the plows plow, and they do the best they can. We do have citizens within our community that aren't able to shovel themselves out, or they're disabled, or they're elderly. So what we do is we don't do anything but coordinate and kind of connect people together. Tate at our front desk is keeping a list through Facebook preferably, or calling the city hall, and if you want to volunteer, she'll take the name and phone number of the people willing to go and do the work and help the citizens, and she'll try to connect them with the people in need. It's all very private, so we're not publishing phone numbers and names and addresses or anything like that, but if you are interested in helping out the citizens, it's a great way to kind of pitch in and give a hand when those plows do go through and marry people. Hopefully, we don't have that much snow this year. So are there any questions?
I'll just plug the Go Shovel Snow For Your Neighbor thing. Great way to get to know people, I would tell you. I was doing it last year.
Yeah, it was really successful last year. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Jen. And this is a protocol, State did a great job.
Yeah, I think our crews went out Friday morning or Saturday night, or Saturday night, Sunday night and Monday night, I believe. But anyway, they had some very good learning experiences, but also they did an outstanding job. So on number five, I just wanted to mention, I know we had some comments about our school's own signage modifications, and so about a week ago, Chief Hasmus, myself, and Stephen Williams, we went and looked at the school zones, I should say, in the valley, and got some ideas of what, if anything, we can do on Multer in the vicinity of our two schools. And we did bring back some ideas that we'll be incorporating. One is the end of the school zone, so when you're approaching the school zone, it's telling you you're going into the school zone. We think we can make that better by saying you're now end of the school zone, putting up a sign. Some things that they do in the valley, we're exploring, we're kind of evaluating the cost to see if they could add improvements, but they do have flashing yellow lights in the valley, so that when it is 20 miles an hour, the lights are flashing. And so we're looking into how do they program that and all those things. So nothing to propose right now, but I just wanted council to know that we're working on some modifications to improve safety. The other note I was going to mention is that on capital facilities plan, there's been talk about a strategic capital facilities plan. And so Amanda and I met with Greg Doran and one of his associates, got some ideas, and we typed it up. Greg actually typed it up and gave you all a copy. So today, we're not expecting that you do anything, but we want you to look at the two different options. One is a less expensive option, is to take our capital facilities plan that we have now and update it. Another is to really tackle it at a strategic level with a large emphasis on community engagement. And so we would take different facilities that we have, including Trailhead or Town Square, City Hall, or the library, and really kind of do an in-depth look at the whole facility, what kind of feedback do we have from the community? So that's a longer and a more expensive approach. Next council meeting, which is November 21st, we'll be having a workshop on that, but I wanted to get you the two different scenarios, so you had time to look at it before November 21st. No decision tonight, just something that we passed out. And then finally, a few dates to remember, we also passed out a calendar, and there's two things this week I just wanted to mention. One is, as we all know, Veterans Day is Saturday, but City Hall will be observing that, and so will the library on Friday, so we'll be closed. And then also, the leaf pickup, which is a joint adventure between, with ourselves and the Liberty Lake Southern Water District. We're doing leaf pickup south of I-90 on Saturday and Sunday. If you live north of I-90 in the River District, that'll be November 13th, which is Monday. So with that, Mayor, that concludes my report.
Good. Thank you. So, we're now in the workshop, revision of concept design. KPFF, I think I see our presenters here in the front room.
Saturday, yes.
Andrew?
Ily. So, in the past few months, we have been working with KPFF on coming up with options for how we expand the capacity of our current bridge. Everybody's seen the backup that we have every day trailing down Appleway. It causes a lot of congestion, a lot of wait time that is unnecessary, and we can avoid if we put in the right improvements. So that is what David McMullin here from KPFF is going to be talking through to us today, this evening.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. And thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members, for the opportunity to actually work on this project, and it's been a pleasure working with Andrew, by the way. What we want to cover tonight is introduce you to our whole team, let you know what the priorities we're using in our design, so you will understand that. You probably don't need to be reminded of the purpose and needs, so that'll be a little bit quick. And then we'll really get into the parameters of the design and the alternatives that we're looking at, and then the next steps will be what the budget is and what our rough timeframe through construction will be. So here's the team. KPFF is the prime consultant. Greg here is our structural lead, and Nathan is our civil lead, and Parametrics is providing our survey support. Geoengineers is providing environmental and geotechnical support. DCI is providing our right-of-way support in case property, related to any property tasks. And Fair and Peers, Chris is with Fair and Peers, and they're doing the traffic analysis. And so that's our whole team. The priorities that we're looking at to include in the design as we design the project is maintenance of traffic on the bridge. There'll be two lanes of traffic across the bridge through the entire construction, minimizing impacts on I-90, which is very important with our partner in Washita. Future compatibility as your community continues to grow, to actually add a fourth lane, so we don't want to design anything now that would make that more difficult, and bringing the project in on budget at the time. So here's our purpose and need statement. You don't have to say anymore that there is the queue as you're heading into the I-90 interchange and Parker Bridge. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to Chris to talk about the traffic analysis that's going into this design.
My name's Chris Gorgic, I'm doing the traffic engineering with Fair and Peers. So we're just looking at the benefits of what the new lane would look like on the bridge. So you can see today, as you guys are all well aware, the backups go all the way past Signal Drive on this road over here, I'm not sure if I have a pointer or not, but right, you know, past, way past up here off the map as well, as down around Intervista. So when we add the extra lane, we did look at what the ramp intersection might look like depending on if it's just an exit or a push-through. And really, that has less of an impact on the total moving of traffic through the interchange as does just the impact on the intersection down here of Liberty Lake and Appleway. We do see a reduction of queues. So in our model, we do see the queues that you guys experienced, the photo that we just showed, and then we see the reduction of queues in the model as well, once we add that lane. It clears Liberty Lake Road quite a ways down. However, we did really see the full impact of the queues disappearing of Appleway, which is also a significant problem. And in order to get those queues to disappear, we needed to show an additional right-turn lane. So that was just a new lane widening to the north up here at the top of the road, and having two right-turn lanes feed into the bridge. So that's just to ensure that we get the maximum benefit of those new two lanes crossing the bridge. And with that, we see a backup that goes almost to Signal Drive, but not past it. So it's about a third of the length of what we had seen without those two lanes. We do still have a bit of a backup across the bridge, but you do get on the I-90 pretty quickly with that. That's it for traffic.
Thanks, Chris. So Greg has some of the bridge engineers at KPFF. I'm going to talk about some of the different bridge options that we looked at for the project. First of all, let me just go over what the existing conditions are and what the new roadway configuration will be. So right now, the bridge has a curb width of 29.5 feet, and in order to make that co-compliant with modern traffic standards, we would be adding about 11.5 feet total. So the new roadway configuration will be 41 feet. So the first thing that we do in time with a bridge widening is we make sure that we have adequate clearance to I-90. So Parametrics, our surveyors, went out there and scanned underneath the bridge to make sure that we did, we need a minimum of 16 feet to widen the structure. And the good news is we can widen on either side and not impact the clearance on I-90. So we looked at several different options, I'm going to give you three options, and then the third option is our preferred option. The first one that we looked at was basically widening on both sides, the thought being that we can widen just up here and not add, save the cost of adding any additional columns. However, this option does not work well because of additional phasing. In order to build on two sides, the project would take longer to construct, and also we end up adding more load to these existing columns, and so we have to do a bunch of reference, and this is actually a more costly alternative. Then we looked at just widening on one side, and so that would be basically adding in 11 feet over here, and this is shown on the west side of the bridge. And this works really well with all of the different project criteria, you know, we established maintenance of traffic, construction schedule, future fourth lane compatibility, and then meeting all of the Washita structural criteria. However, when we look at this in plan view, Nathan's going to talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, so to widen, this bridge would also need to, of course, widen the roadway leading up to it. And with this option, we're showing a widening on the west side of the bridge, so you would see a roadway widening from just north of the intersection all the way up to just south of the roundabout. We didn't see any fatal flaws with this option. However, you would need to reconstruct the median here fairly significantly, and that's something that you wouldn't have to do with our preferred option. As far as future compatibility goes, not only would you need to do it for this addition of one northbound lane, you would also need to come back and reconfigure this again if another lane was added on the east side, so essentially effectively adding another southbound lane. So that kind of led us away from this option.
So the preferred option is widening on the east side of the roadway, and so it's basically the same thing as widening on the west side, you're just doing all of the work on the east side, and again, meets all of the project priorities that we established. In the plan view.
Yeah. Sorry for all the background. So yeah, again, this is going to be a widen on the east side, and it fits in nicely with the existing two lanes northbound that now merge down into one. You have a fill slope down to the existing grade, still clearance with the Avista property. We looked at a couple of options here with how to deal with the on-ramp. This one is showing an exit only essentially for that. This one is showing an exit only essentially for that outside lane. You would not need to reconstruct this median as we showed before in the previous option. And then if you came back in the future and widened on the other side to add a southbound lane, all of this could remain in place and be untouched. So it's a little more efficient option with the compatibility.
So this is just a cross-section showing what the bridge would look like during construction. And so, basically, we just have to slide a barrier inside of the existing barriers so that they can remove that and do the widening work that they have to do out there. The good news is, we can keep two lanes of traffic throughout the project. And there would be some minimal closures here and there, but those would be at night and very limited in order to set up some of this work. And then in terms of the schedule and project budget, the schedule from point of NTP through construction is about a year. We're saying five to seven months for the design phase, then you have a couple of months for the add phase, listing bids, and then the construction phase would also be in that five to seven month range. And then in terms of cost, it's about four and a half million dollar project. We'll have a report that comes out next week. There'll be a draft report that'll have a lot more information in it for your review. And then there'll be a final version due in January.
Can you go back to the slides? Can you go back to the slide that shows the current existing?
This one?
Yep. So, go back one. There you go. So have you guys taken into consideration, or I guess a better question would be, what impact do you foresee on I-90 westbound on-ramp? We have a big challenge as it is for cars that are going to come around this loop on the I-90 westbound with that flow of traffic. Is there a distance for them to be able to get on? So have you guys thought about?
Are you talking about during construction?
Yeah. So it's a good question. We did look at that. So this, our preferred option would have a new column about right here, and there would be a work zone set up. The I-90, we think you'd have the lower design speed to 60 miles an hour, so 10 mile an hour drop. You would have, if you had a two-foot shoulder, which is acceptable for work zones, you would only have to shift the lanes by three and a half feet. And you could gain that distance in the shoulder on this side. So you wouldn't see a change in the length of the merge. You would see narrower lanes and slightly shifted.
To add a question on?
Yep.
After construction, if we have traffic flowing even better around that circle, part of the flow relief coming into the I-90, we have, so there's double the number of cars that are actually able to make it around there. Is there a problem then to come on I-90 around? Chris, can you answer that in terms of traffic?
So the, the number of cars that are getting there, they're just getting there more frequently than they are today. So there's, we haven't seen any backups in the merge there in our, in our models at all. But it's definitely a valid concern as you're increasing the frequency of cars that are that are getting there. But yeah, we haven't seen any backups on I-90 because of the merge there.
Councilman Receivers, I was just going to mention, DOT is looking at that westbound on-ramp approach because of the shortness of the merge and the visibility. So I don't have anything specific tonight, but they've let us know that they're looking at that.
I think it's going to be really important when we look at doing this project, you look at the 7:00 AM hour, when people are trying to head into town, that even then it gets backed up if people try to merge onto the freeway. So it's definitely something we want to be attentive to.
Have you taken into consideration some of the planning that's going around with Henry Road in conjunction with this at all? Or have there been praise to that, surprise to that?
I guess we're not going to be doing anything that would prohibit anything involving Henry Road.
No, I understand that. It's one of the, one of the issues, one of the things that we brought up and we're working on underneath the Henry Road proposal interchange is to create a slip road that doesn't join the freeway until past Henry Road. And that kind of takes, makes this a lot more comfortable because this on, joining the freeway in, from the loop, now it takes place kind of underneath the bridge. And we're trying to push that down further west so that it comes out in a much more straight area, kind of down in the sketch as to where Appleway Fly Oak takes place now. For safety, that's, that's a big driver for that little area right now. So I mean, there's lots of valid concerns there. Just want to make sure that we're all on that same page. Okay?
The other thing, I'm sorry, I want to point out just for purposes of clarification, go back to the budget slide just so that everyone is aware. We do not have full funding for this project at this time. So Andrew knows all the deadlines and the funding sources that we will be applying for. But to kind of cut to the chase, so four and a half million, sounds like that's designing construction kind of fully loaded.
Yeah, that's $20,000, $20,000.
Twenty, twenty dollars. Then we did receive a commitment from DOT for $800,000 if we go to construction by 2020, which I know will be a challenge, but it's still doable. And then I'm going to have Andrew talk to the other funding sources because really this, for the next step to happen, we have to go through the design process and then seek full funding for construction. And so I was wondering if you could give us a sense of how competitive would this project be in the funding world of, because there's a lot of people out there that want their projects funded. So I'm just curious how competitive you think this project would be.
This project would be very competitive because you are a growing community. And, and when it comes to things that are competitive in, in funding sources, it's things like air quality. And so if your queue is reduced, it's going to improve air quality, so that's an important thing. And it also utilizes an existing structure, which is key too. You're, you're saving structure that you already have, and so that's always a very good thing when you go to a funding source because building new is usually further down on the list.
Let's see. You know, we're currently looking at an overlay because of the deteriorating. So could you coordinate, I mean, how's the quickness, how, how quickly can we get to the design process if we settle on this additional lane like you've put forward? To get it out to bid and kind of put those two things together rather than overlay and then try to go back and fix it or tie it to it?
So? Andrew asked that question.
Yeah, they answered. Okay.
Yeah. So we had, we had asked that question months ago because we, the last thing we want to do is expend public dollars and then have new pavement that is torn out of debt. That is a waste of public funds. So when we asked that question, you know, can we go ahead with this overlay work and make sure that we are not going to be throwing away dollars that we have just spent in two years later, coming back and tearing out new pavement? And the answer I had back from KPF is that we can go ahead and do our overlay work without having to worry about any significant tear out of what we put down.
So you said two separate projects.
They can be two separate projects, and we don't have to worry about cutting out a bunch of work that we just put down.
Would there be any benefit if we kind of front-loaded and try to get the thing done sooner or at the same time?
I couldn't say that there wouldn't be benefit because if you have a contractor on site doing multiple things, it's always more.
Well, I mean, you can have the, at one time, you can get rid of all, put all the payment on there. I, I guess that's my question, is if we're looking at 2018 overlay or 19, somewhere around that line. And so I mean, if we're looking at, trying to do this before 2020, well, that's 18, 19. So we're pretty close, and you're telling me that I can have a, and then five to seven months have a permit basically to put the bridge up. Probably if you start today, so you're talking about February, March next year, right? And then just kind of brought this in more context. And the funds, I guess the other question I have, Katie, is the funding for the design work, is that covered underneath the 800 downbound or that's just construction? So the 800 down has to come out of our pocket or?
Right. So the design would is, the construction is what DOT committed to, is dollars towards construction of the, of the bridge. I can revisit that with them and see if they want, are willing to front-load some of the design work. I know DOT does have an interest in this project moving forward. It's always good when you have regional support for this project. And I did meet with Spokane Valley and the county today, and a lot of people that live in River Lake are choosing to go to Barker because of the congestion here. And to the degree that we can keep our cars and our trips on this, on Harvard, helps them with their Barker Road challenge. So there's, I think there's regional support for this project, but we're still going to have to work really hard because it is a competitive world out there, and there's a lot of different projects that funding agencies have to evaluate. So to answer your question, I can, my recollection was the DOT committed to funding this, the construction of the bridge. That means to me that there, we're only going to get reimbursed when we go to construction, that we cannot use their dollars to do the design work. But you know, in the whole application, and Andrew's going to correct me if I'm wrong, when you package the design up, then that is, that part is also reimbursable if you end up getting funded.
So design bill, if you put the money, then we're going to?
Yeah. If we pursue funding, our, our funding applications are going to be staggered, so we're going to be going after TIV, SDP, and a host of a couple of other things. Some of those are going to be available soon enough so that we would be able to start design and have our design funded by outside sources.
Another thing that makes this project attractive in the funding world is the fact that you guys have already invested in the project by starting the design that we're using.
Right. Okay. So.
Mayor, Councilman Langford had a question or a comment.
Just thinking, with your traffic analysis, how far out does that reach? Can you, can you give a year to it that you have included traffic patterns up to a year, two years?
Yeah, so we've, we've looked at future traffic in the 2040 model. So we're looking at build out to what, what's expected in the travel model for the River Lake in the year 2040.
Thank you. Okay, so.
So on that note.
That's our next step, I guess.
Yeah, we have an open house tomorrow from 5:00 to 7:00. You're welcome to come. We're going to have a lot of pictures, a lot of, you know, one-on-one questions with our consultants here.
They're going to be there tomorrow? Oh, great.
Here at City Hall, so we welcome you to come. And then the next step, Andrew, I'm going to let Andrew describe what that next step looks like.
So what's going to happen after this, we are going to finish up our work with KPF. They'll give us the final report. And then we're going to begin more serious discussions with WashDOT about how the project is going to proceed from here.
Okay. All right.
Andrew, is, are your 2020s that big because we just believe it's going to take us three years to get funding together and get all the dogs on the road actually start construction? Or did the council, Pam, said this is our, I'm not sure, but we came and said this is our top priority, pull the trigger, get it done. How quickly did it actually get done?
About 2020.
Okay.
No, it, the reason is, is that there are funding cycles and when funds become available, and so we have to work with those, and that's, that's where that's coming from.
Got you. Thank you.
Okay, guys, well, we'll see you tomorrow night for sure, right? So action items here.
Mayor, move action item, General Business 1, to approve October 17th, City Council Matt, to approve November 7, 2017 vouchers, made amount of $440,000, $400.97.
Second?
Yes, sir.
Further discussion? I hear you all favor say aye.
Aye.
There we go.
Mayor, move Action Item, General Business 1, to approve AWC trust participation agreement and operate Mayor Peters to enter into agreement.
Second? Second, further discussion? I hear you all favor say aye.
Aye.
There we go.
Mayor, move General Business Number 2, to approve Orchard Park Task Order in the amount of $25,665 for the site improvements.
Second? Second, further discussion? I hear you all favor say aye.
Aye.
There we go. Okay, that's the public hearing for the City of Oregon budget.
I just got a few items to discuss, Mayor. Mayor, City Council, so this evening we have the second public hearing on the 2018 budget. I want to take this time just to highlight a few items that we went over at the last meeting and just talk a little bit more about the other revenue sources between property tax and sales tax. This slide, and you also have a presentation in front of you as well. The, so the budget of the 1% increase is estimated to be about $23,000, $24,000. And just so you know, that property tax revenue covers library and a portion of the police department. Our current levy rate this year right now is $1.69. We're estimating that this rate, and I did get final numbers, or I made the levy numbers for 18 for the county, is going to be close to $1.63, $100,000. And it was mentioned in public comment tonight that, you know, the, everyone got their, that owns a property, got their AV assessed valuation. Most of the time you see an increase. That increase in the assessed valuation doesn't necessarily always mean that your property taxes are increased. A lot of that is proportional, so if your neighbors and everyone else around you's AV is increasing, you, that doesn't, that will not constitute that your property taxes are increasing as long as you've got that fair comment. So if you're, if you, if you're the only house in River Lake and your AV increased, you are going to have a larger amount of property tax to pay, but every month should sell an increase on theirs. And you can check those rates compared to your neighbors on Spokane County's website if you look at AV or the people around you. And also on your private tax, to realize that of the private tax you pay, 12.5% of that actually goes to the city. The rest of it goes to other jurisdictions. This slide is showing those other jurisdictions that we compare to. And just looking at city, we're at $1.69 currently today, and we're lower than the other cities comparable to us. Now you've got these other outside of our jurisdiction control between fire and county and school bond. It was mentioned that the school on the general, or I'm sorry, on the state school, this number is going to increase in 18. They actually will, there is, there is a, on the ballot, there's a advisory bill on here to vote on this one to possibly challenge that, but this one's projected to be about $2.75 per thousand for next year. In 2019, this guy here is supposed to drop down to, I believe, a buck fifty per thousand. So why does he in 18 increase? 19 should see a decrease the way that's written currently. As we compare with other cities in here, we are overall lower levy rate. I would expect that to still stay true. Chaney and Airway Heights are unique because they operate their own fire department out of there, and where we out here is part of district. So that's why their rates tend to be lower. Sheen owns most of the utilities, and they can charge a higher utility tax rate than other cities can. Airway Heights has a casino out there, they have a new situation with that, with that as well. So statutory limits updated this slide compared to last time. Our statutory levy limit rate is $2.10 per thousand. That's because we operate our own library and our statutory fees are $1.60. Our highest lawful levy, this is what we have baked in our capacity, is almost 2.4 million. With the 1% increase at $1.63, our proposed levy limit is 2, 2.3 million. This does not include a new construction, this gets factored into it as the usual. We showed this slide last time just to show, in 2011 is the last time we used the entire baked capacity. We, in 2011, that was during the recession, we imposed the capacity that we had. We, in 2011, that was during the recession, we imposed the capacity that we had, which had played about 3.5% increase of property taxes, so it kind of reset the year. So since 2012 through 2017, this, you can see whether it was increased or not, either 0% or 1% in this year, this represents a revenue loss if we would have increased by 1%. Right now our difference in capacity is 103,000 if we wanted to go up to that levy rate, that's additional revenue we could get, but overall through those years, 433,000. So what I wanted to highlight here is kind of take a little closer look at the sales tax because that's the one that's doing very well in this point in time, so I wanted to pull up some numbers from that. This was in the quarter report last month. This is, this top line is the sales tax that we've been doing this year and it has been performing very well. In October, it actually dropped down to right there below that time. So it did have a decrease, lower than we were at 16 because it shows up about 288,000, but there is a reason to concern, it's actually kind of normal in some of these trends. 14 had a very high year because we had a specific company do a large infrastructure and computer. So that's one type of knowledge why this number is so high. So extrapolating on that number is looking at this sales tax going from 2008 to 2017, kind of by category. And so what I took, what I usually show is when I'm showing retail, I usually have RV and autos included in this other, this retail number here. So what I want to do for this slide is to rip out RV, auto and RVs from everything, from everything else that we do that's on the retail side. So what this graph is showing from eight to 17 is an increase, this one is the strongest growing sales tax area that we have. So 111,000, 1.1 million, sorry, is the anticipated for 17, about 3.3 million we're expected to collect, so about one-third is coming from this, from this general revenue source. You can also see construction that used to be even with all these other revenues is also being increased over the last few years and we're seeing that in growth on the inventory side. So what I point out in these two is these are, based on the economy, these are the ones that concern me in the long term because can we maintain this level of productivity or will they drop down at some point? And you can see the other retail sources, so in here you have your food, accommodations, information, professional services that get sales tax charged to it and they have a modest increase over the years. This table is just another way of looking at this data from a graph from the table this is pulled from. So this is where retail overall, auto and RV include that number. If you were to take this number here and add it to that number, you end up taking it here. And then when you say that auto and retail has about half of our sales tax, 1.5 to 3.5 million for last year. This slide is in your budget. This is looking at general fund expenditures and tying your revenue source to them. I highlighted out here the property tax increase, 1% and almost 24,000. You know, what we've tried to paint the picture here, and some revenues have specific rules like the property tax from the library, why is that there? We have an ordinance that says that 23.8% of the property tax goes to the library. We've said, well, the rest of the property tax would go to public safety. That's just the idea, the hierarchy, what's important on our department expenditures will go to public. There's something that says that specifically has to happen, that's how we create this picture. The loser is the sales tax. So if this not goes away, you know, two things happens where we're using expenditure here or the sales tax helps cover this gap. And this is kind of two ways to, to look at, to look at that. So why the 1% of property tax is to maintain a level of service. The question being is the revenue growth from sales tax and permitting sustainable over the long, or in construction? Sales tax and building permits tend to be elastic, it's very driven by how the economy's doing. Our sales tax is very strong on the auto and RVs, sales, building permits due to going to be one-time revenues, once we're built out, we're done, we're not getting that money again. And then so there's this question, well, we get this extra revenue from sales tax and building permits, but since it's more similar, more one-time or maybe not sustainable, we are organized with using those one-time highs for those CP, capital facility planning items that we're talking about. As Andrew mentions, the road, you know, we're looking for funding, we have to have match for the bridge that we're intending to build. We have parks that are bringing on, we have other large capital facility items, Trailhead, they're matched in the future. And then this last, the bank for future use. So when you bank it, you don't give that capacity that you banked it back. And then the other question with the banking, is we don't, when do we use it? When do we actually utilize that bank? The last time that we, the last time we utilized the bank was back in 2011 and that's when the economy was at its, it started to recover, although we're at this force. So that's when we're saying, we're going to, that's when we're going to utilize it. What's the, what's the, what's the time that we actually use that? If we do choose to bank tonight, it's not language in the ordinance, so there's specific language we need to add, but there is a desire, a pass, but you're not going to. Question? Not?
So the, I just want to get this right, on your slide, levy rates among cities. In 2017, 2017 Liberty Lake was $1.691. $1.69. And we started this city a number of years ago, basically we started with 210. And so we're at $1.69 and competitiveness to the other cities versus to the city of Spokane Valley, we're both. The second thing is, is that going forward in 2018 budget, I saw a number of $1.63. Is that correct?
I'm sorry.
$1.63 in 2018.
So we had, yeah, we were asking $1.63.
Okay, so that is a reduction of six cents per thousand. That's a reduction, taking the 1%, I want to kind of address Holly's comment, taking the 1% increase in our property tax, they've had some growth, they benefit from that. Taking the 1%, your property tax in, for the city, I'm not telling you what the state's doing, and I'm not telling you what the county's doing, and I'm not telling you what the other people are doing, but for the city, your property tax is going down six cents, not up six cents, down six cents from what you paid last year. I just want the public to fully understand is that we try to run a very efficient ship that we provide, we're the, we're kind of where the rubber meets the road, you know, as far as services, what you see is what you get. Our priorities, and you saw in the, in the green, I guess, bar, is our property tax goes to the police department and it goes to the library. So you've got good service, a great community, and this year in 2018, with this increase of 1%, you'll pay six cents less. I think that's important and I think that needs to be known by our community. Any other comments?
I think RJ mentioned this, that there, there is no statutory requirement for property tax to go to public safety, the police department. This happens to be an amount comparable to what is allocated from the general fund to the police department for operations. So I don't want people to think that this tax increase is going to go to the police department because it really isn't, it goes to the, goes to the general fund. Only a portion of it goes to the library, which is established by ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, but when I did establish the graph, it was looking at a hierarchy of services. So expend, public safety being the one that rises to the top to put the most reliable property tax or revenue source to. So it wasn't looking at it because it was comparable to, an expenditure is looking at it from a hierarchy, property tax being the most elastic. And that would be the one that we would see if we had to reduce services, would we look last year.
One other point I'd just like to make, that's Holly's comment about the property taxes. Mayor is correct, our rate is low and competitive and it will go down. But as a taxpayer and a citizen, I don't look at what my Liberty Lake tax is, I look at what does my tax bill? Okay? My levy, my such value on my little adobe, $15,000 in one year. So are my overall taxes going to go down for the year? Probably not.
But you can start picking on some of these other jurisdictions like the county who does this road levy shift. And that's why one, the levy rate is higher on there too. I mean, school, you determine tonight, people can vote against this one if they don't see the left of the levy rate go up.
Last year I voted against the 1% increase, myself and one other council member voted against it. And one of my objections was that we had a $900,000 budget surplus last year and we've had budget surpluses for the last three years. And I don't think we should increase taxes just because we can. I think we increase taxes when we, when we need the, need the revenue, we need the cash flows for operations around the city.
And my argument showing this is long-term, we're going to need that revenue source or we're going to come back to the people and we're going to catch them when times are tougher.
We're in this evening tonight, listening to these four gentlemen tell us that we're going to have to put $4.5 million in Harvard Road. We got $800,000 from DOT and so now there's another 380,000, or 3.8 million or 3.7 million dollars due from somebody else or ours. We are, we'll be talking about in near future, Trailhead and just the net and irrigation, irrigation out there on Trailhead for a green golf course. On that pipe is 1.2 million dollars, Kate, 1.3 million dollars?
Approximately.
Approximately. You know, we're talking about the net is a million dollars maybe, who knows? So you have, there's $7 million in stuff. When you talk about our city and kind of one of the things I don't want to get into is, is our community get into a structural deficit like the county exists today. And they will tell you that there is structural deficit because their costs are increasing, let's say 2% a year. So our costs, the chief, the officer's salary just out of the police department, about a million bucks, just salaries, chief, is he here?
Yeah, just, just under.
Just under a million dollars. A 2% increase in a million dollars is 20 grand. Just the officer's salaries, not their benefits, not the other stuff that goes in there, not all the other stuff, that doesn't include the other 17 or 20 people that work in here. Just the officer's salaries in the police department, it's going to go 20,000 bucks, 2% just this year. And the next year it's going to go up another 2% on top of the 2%. So when you just look at what we're trying to provide so that we don't get into a structural deficit, we're trying to minimize the impact of the structural deficit by making sure that we're taking what we're earning from the community on a yearly basis. And RJ showed you another slide on that, says, once it passes by, you lose the effect of that. And yes, it's nice to say that, hey, we don't have, we don't, we didn't go up a penny or two pennies or whatever, we, whatever, we didn't take the little pennies, but they add up in the long run. And you'll see the valley, city of the Spokane Valley, they've, headline, we passed up our property tax increase for eight years. Isn't that wonderful? What we're going to compensate for our streets by now, we're going to, they're talking about the 6% utility tax because they got a problem with taking care of their roads. They're talking about, we need money to provide the bridging of the valley, $84 million. Where's that going to come from? I can appreciate everybody, the state and Bob's comment about how other people don't run their ship tightly, this is well-run. And I would suggest that the council and people who are very concerned with their property tax start to take a look at this piece of picture appear and talk to the people that are driving their property tax. The McClary decision is what's causing the levy swap. The McClary decision is why they uncapped the 1% from the state. The legislators have taken, you know, will drive more, more taxing to the public, the legislators, not the city council. Take your comments to them, but here, our goal is to make sure that this city is protected or at least well-managed for the future. And as we grow and taking care of the people that we do have, and over time, we've been able to pick out things where we've gotten additional revenue. We've got a new garbage contract, we put $100,000 in our pocket. That led to a part of the surplus. We took the weeds money from, in your property tax, you used to pay $3 in weed fees, now you're paying $1.80, took $1.20 every year. That's a lot of six cents that we gave back to you. The Aqua for protection money came back into the city back in 2012 because we harness those things. We're good stewards, we do have a surplus. You're right, Bob, we do have a surplus. But that surplus is only going to last so long and there's going to be need for that surplus in the future. And I want to be prepared, be able to make those matches so that we can get that construction underway quickly. I want to be prepared to replace my, my line out here and my pump out here at Trailhead so I can keep it green. That's where this, the mayor's budget, this budget came from, is to not only make sure that we're sustainable, but sustainable in the future and protecting those services that we've built up and we take pride in delivering. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I want to recognize the need for an elastic revenue source in support of the city. I recognize the sales tax as fluctuating depending on economic activity, but the department tax not having that subject. I am persuaded by the notion that the 2017 rate at $1.691 going down to $1.63 for 2018 including this makes this to me an important action that should be taken by the city. So I support this.
RJ, do you mind going back to your slide? Let's see here. We talked about this briefly in finance committee tonight. RJ, again, pointed out that auto and RV sales alone are 33% of the overall sales tax revenue. Exactly to mirror what you just said, Councilmember Dunn, in tough economic times, I would worry that if something like that, we're so fortunate to have these businesses and the sales tax that bring, if we didn't have that coming in, seems to be the auto and RV sales would be one of the first things hit by tough economic times. Boy, then we're going to talk about increasing tax rates on our citizens when they're probably needing that money much more than any other time. So I strongly support this through a lot of research and thanks to RJ for all the help doing that. I think that's necessary.
Other comments? On any of them?
RJ, how did you arrive at that $400,000 that we've lost expanded over the past? RJ, how did you arrive at that $400,000 that we've lost expanded open?
It's looking at each year that we did not impose 1% property tax and what that nexus would be. And then because you're, because you didn't take it, your base is lower going the next year. So you started adding the cumulative effects of 19 plus whatever that 1% would have been if you were at a certain level. And over the years, that adds up to the 4.
And how many years has it took to get to that 433 mark?
12 through 17, five years.
2012?
Six years.
Six years. And in the six years, how much surplus have we accommodated in both the capital and the operational budgets?
I don't have the number on it, but we have gone firmly basically 2.9 million in cash. Is there a big factor in your price of 104 million dollars?
To the 4 million, it's a far cry from 400,000, isn't it? So I think the plea, as passionate as it was to consider what we've accomplished is great, but when you talk about one-tenth of what you've saved and have in reserve, it pales in having to take somebody and increase their tax because you've lost $400,000 over six years. And in the same period, you've accumulated over 4 million.
Right.
So through whatever means, okay? And if it's good management, that's wonderful. Certainly don't expect that to change. So I appreciate the effort, but it falls short in my book. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Just something to consider, because we have been since 2012 in a somewhat recovering and a recovering and a strong economy. And a lot of our surpluses, I think, are being built from strong auto sales, strong permits. I mean, Manda shared with us today the number of dollars that we've collected in permitting revenues. Those are one-time dollars. And we as a city have fallen short in some of the services that we provide, especially over in the River District where a lot of that money is coming from. We don't have a park over there. We don't mow grass over there. We haven't really been taking care of our streets over there. There's a lot of responsibility that we have when people take out a building permit, buy a house, and move to Liberty Lake. And there's an expectation that roads are going to get plowed, potholes are going to get fixed. The new park that we're talking about, Orchard Park, that's a whole nother group of employees that we don't have right now. And just, we know how much it's going to cost, and we know how much equipment we're going to need. But the people that moved over to the River District, and I don't mean to just point them out, but basically people that live on the north side of I-90 have paid for a building permit, bought a home, and have received very minimal city services. Police services, yes. Library services, yes. Park services, no. Street services, minimal. And so I just want to point out that as we grow as a city, we've benefited from the strength of the economy, the building permit revenue, and now we have an obligation to provide services throughout our city in an equitable fashion. And I don't know that we have been doing that. And so as these homes come online, and as a park comes online, that takes a lot of resources. And so, yes, we have a surplus. I don't want to deny that. But also, we have a responsibility to provide equitable services, I think, on both sides of I-90.
I totally agree with what Katie says. We have the responsibility, and we should be thinking about that responsibility when we put out a bond for a pool that's going to cost $300,000 annually just for maintenance. That's a one-time shot per year, $300,000. And all of a sudden now, we don't know how we're going to operate on the north side without this money. It makes no sense. Why weren't we thinking about that when we were out there pushing the prop? Because that's $300,000 annually. It's taken us 12 years to not gain this 433. Again, you know, we should be thinking about this in the long term, right? Apparently, it's not that way.
Not knowing where the $300,000 come from.
Absolutely not knowing.
No, I mean, that's the reference on that reading.
We had no idea where it was coming from.
No, I mean, I don't know where that number is referring to.
Well, y'all presented it. And I say y'all, I said, not you, sir.
I'm no bigger advocate for strategic long-term planning than I have been on this council, and I still am. And a lot of the things that we do, we're still doing our reactionary. They're not planned. You know, we're not replacing the irrigation system at the golf course because we had planned on doing that. We did it because we're reacting again to being useful life. So that's not strategic planning, that's being reactionary again. I'd just like to point out too, again, you know, the $900,000 surplus from last year, we didn't add that to reserves for future projects. We spent it on two unbudgeted projects. Now, to me, that was reactionary. We all voted for those projects. One was real estate for trails. It's somewhat speculative because we still don't have an easement for the people on legacy grid. The other part was because we already had contractors working on Liberty Lake Road, and we decided that it might make some sense to go ahead and let them spend $600,000 to do country visit. Anyway, that to me is not long-term strategic planning, that's reactionary. And I think it was irresponsible for us to increase taxes last year, and I think it's going to be irresponsible for us to do it again this year. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? We should open the public hearing, right?
Listen, Mayor, if I may, I do have a comment from Councilmember Koeniskas that she wanted me to share. She says, "I feel a vote regarding property tax is premature at this point. I have too many questions about the budget at this time. If a vote is going to happen tonight, I cannot in good faith vote in favor of an increase at this time. Please do not interpret this as non-support of our officers or public safety." Councilmember Koeniskas.
Open the public hearing now on the budget, so it's open at 8:37. Any people from the public want to comment on our budget? Our property tax, 1% increase? Josh?
So, good evening, Josh Beckett, 23206 East Maxwell. What I want to say is that, so back in 2011, when we had to take our reserves or leverage the bank, I was on council, and it was difficult times when we had the debates about utility tax and all the things that you still wrestle into. It's one of the few times, Mayor, that you and I agree that I do think that the council should take the 1% increase. However, my bid of caution, Bob, I think you said it best, the council and Mayor have traditionally spent money that were unbudgeted throughout the course of the year. Budget numbers come up, projects come up, especially when there's always been extra money. And the problem is, when you look at the unfunded liabilities the city has, there's not enough money, despite whether we have taken as 1% since the inception of the city, to cover our true expenditures. So I don't know how you put it in a lockbox to steal from Al Gore and the famous line about social security, but when there is a budget surplus, it's reckless at best to justify raising or taking the 1% to then spend it on projects that were not, you know, hadn't gone through the full budget cycle. And so it strongly suggests that you take the 1%, but it's really incumbent upon the council to ensure that the money is there and banked for, you know, that rainy day. Because, you know, unlike our other cities or jurisdictions that we're compared to on the graphs that RJ had shown, you know, when you look at our tax base, it's almost built on a house of cards, right? So when we went through the last economic crisis, you know, people stopped buying Mercedes businesses and RVs, and which is why we had to use those extra funds in 2011. And we haven't done a decent enough job to diversify our tax base, much like the Valley. So it's a little apples-to-oranges comparison, Mayor, when we use the Valley. They have whole other issues that, you know, thankfully, we don't have. But the city is still struggling to establish its tax base so that we don't have to every year take that 1% increase, because like Bob said, you know, his taxes aren't going to go down this year. All of ours are going to go up despite our levy rate. So however the council can ensure that whatever surplus exists that is treated banked and put towards those budgets or projects that have gone through the budget cycle or the capital facilities plan, so, and congratulations.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Don't start it before I get here. My comments would be strictly on what I am holding, and that would be the tax increase. I, for a citizen speaking tonight, am very pleased that over the years, that through wise decisions that the council's made, we're sitting there with a $3 to $4 million reserve because of the obvious reasons, what I've looked over, what's already been done, how we got them there. The concern that I've had for a long period of time is, my wife and I were in the RV business many years ago, and we also had an interest in auto dealership that we were involved with. The challenge what happens is that our city of city, where a huge amount of our revenue comes in from a very limited source, that'd be automotive and RV. That's a huge amount. When we were in the RV business, it also had an interest elsewhere. What happens when the economy starts to go, and it will go, we cannot sit here and think that it's not going to go the opposite direction to some degree, because that's what happened. Things are cyclical. We saw it in 2008, we've seen it prior to that. We are going to experience that at some point in the future. What we experienced is the auto sales tapered off. RV sales stopped today. It didn't linger. It didn't sustain for a period of time. And what happened is a huge amount of our business with the RVs was a service. We had a huge business when it came to servicing RVs. That tapered off in two days, because people weren't utilizing it more. I don't bring that up as a fear there, but when it comes to us making decisions and being responsible, it's real easy to say yes, but it's tough to say no. And I think it's important to realize, when do we have to say no and not? We are very fortunate, in my opinion, that we're standing with the reserve that we have, because things that are going to be coming up, it's not even on the budget this next year. The $600,000 that's being proposed for the paper system at Trailhead, $1 million possibly with the netting alone, which was not anticipated for a long period of time. A year or so ago, I thought it was going to be $100,000, and now it's going to be up to $1 million. That can be tapered over several years. But the reserve that we have, if you think about the dollar amount of $600,000 in irrigation, even if we went a half million dollars on the netting, plus Trailhead building itself, we have to do something there, like we don't have to. We are in a position, has to be done. So our reserve, in my opinion, can be disappeared that quick. I support and recommend, council seriously look at the long-term benefit of raising that 1%. And I think it's important for the public to realize, when we talk about 1%, when you're talking about 1%, it's 1% of the existing dollar amount we now receive. Correct me if I'm wrong, RJ, but we're bringing in about $2.2 million, less than $2.2 million in this property tax. And the $23,000 that you see there is a representation of the 1% of that dollar amount. So the citizens keep in mind, it's not that you're suddenly going for 12% up to 13%. So I would simply encourage that to seriously consider. It's a tough decision, but I think it'd be a smart decision to do it now.
Other comments? Public hearing? 8:45, the public hearing is closed on 1% property tax. Say a reordance.
City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington, ordinance number 246. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, levying the regular property taxes for the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, in Spokane County for the year commencing January 1, 2018, to provide revenue for the provision of city services as set forth in the city budget.
Mayor, move ordinance number 246.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion?
I just want to say, from my perspective, I'm never a fan of raising taxes, never. If we can avoid it, I would always want to avoid it. With that being said, we also have a level of expectation for services as a community, and we've been very fortunate at how incredible our level of service has been, from streets to staffing, it's been phenomenal. Everybody has done an amazing job. And we also talk about growth. We hear about growth concerns over and over. That impact is on the streets, that impact is on our parks, that impact is everywhere, that we grow. So for that reason, I would support that.
Further discussion? Pardon? Any other citizen comments on this ordinance? All in favor, ordinance number 246, raise your right hand. I count, one, two, three, four. All opposed to Bob and Owen, so they have to pass this. Any other questions of upcoming items?
Okay, our next meeting is November 21st. It will be Councilmember Coperson's last meeting, potentially, is that true?
That's what I understand.
And then we also have Bishop Jensen, who's been working with Jennifer Camp, and he's going to give you an update on 'tis a season, community gathering. So there's an event at Pavilion Park, so he and some of his colleagues are coming to talk about that event. We also want to do a special recognition for our Master of Police Officer Taj Woperson. His last day is coming up, and so we want to especially recognize his years of dedicated service to our community. Today, we talked about Harvard Road, which we saw as a big expenditure. Next week, we're going to be talking about Trailhead. And so we have a panel between our risk manager, our golf pro, our finance director, and Jennifer Camp, who are going to be talking about the net and the irrigation system, as well as some of the operational elements of Trailhead. Again, not a decision-making, but just to give you information, just a reminder that Trailhead capital improvements is not included in the budget. So we're timing these so that you can make decisions before the budget gets adopted. And then under general business, we have Mayor Peterson, we are appointing Lou Embry to the library board, and then Andrew will be covering the final change order for Liberty Lake Road. And then we also have a public hearing on the budget.
I just want to make one comment, because Taj Woperson is leaving our police department, right? We've already hired his replacement. So Speck Pepper?
Kevin Schmick Pepper will be joining us in a week or two, and so we'll have a great overlap and a...
Who was a previous officer for the city, the governor since once he's come over.
Okay. Mayor, I'm just going to ask, because we have an executive session coming up, that we move citizen comments to the desk.
Okay, so we'll have citizen comments now, okay? So we're going to have our executive session. Paul? That's right. Two. Select. Back.
Been a resident of Liberty Lake for three years, and I've lived in Bitterou, a lot of departments, and I think you're all aware of parking situation on Bitterou Lane. I talked to Andrew the other day. And I have a question. I agree with the no parking to a point of what was done, because I know it was the RVs, the boats that were kind of moving through the thing. I have a question for us. Is this the permanent fix that's there, or was it just to stop what's there now and then plans to do something later?
So we did receive a complaint from the property owner and the management team of the apartment complex, and the road is being used to store, as you mentioned, trailers and boats and campers and RVs. And there was some other temporary parking there. And so we put up the no parking zone because we feel strongly that we're concerned that when cars are parked there for an extended period of time, when we have to plow snow, when Indiana Avenue... when Indiana Avenue goes through, that's the direct connection. We thought in the long run, it would be easiest for us to manage if it was a no parking exclusively forevermore.
If I can give a couple of suggestions?
Sure.
Because I live there and parking within the complex is a little tight. And I have, you know, everybody actually has a garage and a spot behind it, which is fine. In the summer, I don't mind switching cars back and forth, although, you know, I use my garage as a garage for a car and when it's freezing cold or whatever, it's a little bit, you know, I mean, I tell you, a couple of suggestions, in my opinion, would be obviously to prohibit those types of vehicles because it's, what is it, ten people that are, ten vehicles that have made it a problem. Maybe one side of the road can be, can have parking or maybe like those little L's to put in there, parking spots. I actually, if there was a parking permit to pay for, I would pay for it. And that's just my opinion because I think it was a good decision because it cleaned up the roads and more, and safer, although it's kind of like it went from all to nothing. And I possibly think that there is some kind of median, happy medium that could be done. Thank you.
Thank you. And you left your phone number on the yellow card, so we'll be in touch.
No.
Oh, if you could put your phone number on the yellow card, we'd, I'd like to continue the conversation.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you Ted for your comment.
Thank you for listening.
We love to listen. Any, any other comments? Attorney, we're going to go into an executive session for about ten minutes and when we come out, we're going to adjourn, okay?